Yes.
All right, so we're gonna call to order a regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Phyllis, can you start with roll call?
Chairperson Bob McCool.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Lisa Ritchie.
Here.
Commissioner Philus Harden here, David Harper.
Here.
Jerry Malia. Ben Miller.
Here.
Jason Reese.
Jason?
Jason Reese.
His screen might be frozen.
He looks frozen.
He does look frozen. Oh, there he is. There he is.
I'm here.
Anthony Stewart.
Here.
Steve Witty.
Here.
Planner Stephen Williams.
Here.
Attorney Dan Harvey.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, so we do. I've wanted, Jerry's in as an attendee. Any thoughts on how to do that before I move on to public comment? He just left.
He's moved.
Okay, here he comes, he's coming in. I'm gonna give him just a minute.
Thanks, Bob, I'm here, I can see you.
Okay, excellent, so we're gonna move on to public comment on consent agenda and on agenda items. We don't have any attendees, so I'll move on. We have minutes from our February 18th meeting. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
We have a motion from David, Commissioner Harper, who has a second. Second from Commissioner Miller. And then voting, all in favor, are we doing this verbally, Phyllis?
No, we're doing it verbally, let me call out the names. Commissioner McCool.
Approve, yes.
I'm sorry, Chairman. Lisa Ritchie.
I'll abstain, I was absent the meeting.
Philus Harden, yes. David Harper.
I.
Jerry Malia.
Yes.
Ben Miller.
Yes.
Jason Reese.
Yes.
Anthony Stewart.
I abstain.
Steve Witty.
Abstain.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a public hearing on the agenda. It's gonna open a public hearing to review and comment on a final development plan to construct the Marshall Road Bridge over Coal Creek. The final development plan is to extend Marshall Road over Coal Creek with a 90-foot-long and a 50-foot-wide bridge connecting Planning Area 1 with Planning Area 2 of Downtown Superior. This FDP also includes segments of Marshall Road north and south of the bridge, as well as details on vehicle traffic lanes, bike lanes, sidewalks, lighting, landscaping, and signage along each side of the street and bridge. Phyllis, do we have proof of publication?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and Stephen, does staff have a presentation?
Yes, we do. So. I'll start sharing my screen now and work my way through it.
Go on, this is where we have a 3D as well, right?
The applicant will have a 3D presentation to share.
Okay.
All right, can you guys see that all right?
Yep.
Yes.
That's a little better, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So Stephen Williams Town Staff, as stated, this application concerns the Marshall Road Bridge over Coal Creek, as well as two segments of Marshall Road itself, both north and south of the bridge. The right-of-way that's associated with this proposal has already been platted and dedicated to the town, so there's no accompanying plat as part of this proposal, but it's just the FDP. The applicant RC Superior, who will be coordinating the proposed improvements, is in attendance. And the town, as the owner of the right-of-way, is also party to this application. The improvements will generally occur in the area outlined in red here. The proposed roadway, which is consistent with the PD for Downtown Superior, as well as the town's transportation plan, will allow Marshall Road to extend south over Coal Creek and tie into Planning Area 2 within Downtown Superior. The proposed work through this FDP primarily falls within the right-of-way, which has been platted for Marshall Road and was done in 2016. Some off-site work, grade work, is required within Parks 1 and 2, which lie to the immediate west and east, will also be necessary. But the town owns all three areas, so that all will be coordinated together. And the plan is for both the roadwork and the park work to start this fall, pending approval, obviously. So the proposed FDP includes most of the standard sheets associated with the horizontal or infrastructure-focused development application, and generally follows the town's standards in terms of required details and sheet organization. The FDP does not include utility plans, because no water, sewer, or gas is involved in the proposal. The major utility connections under Coal Creek have already been constructed. The proposal does include minor drainage improvements, as well as lighting and irrigation, and those aspects were included with this application. The applicant's contact site plan is included here on the left. The graphic clarifies how the proposal has been coordinated with both existing improvements and with other approved development applications. It also illustrates the bridge, how the bridge and the adjacent parks will be integrated. North of the bridge, the FDP has been coordinated with FDP, so this is FDP 1 Phase 10, and it's been coordinated with FDP 1 Phase 4 to the north, which is shown in the top right. So that application continued Marshall Road essentially from access to get to Park, or the the Superior Plaza development to the north. And it was extended further to the east in order to allow for the Element Hotel to be developed. And that's picking up south of that extension now, in order to tie in. So that's what's illustrated over here. And it's also being coordinated with FDP 1 Phase 9, which we just approved in December of 2019, as part of the Morgan Ranch application. So this geometry gets a little funky. There's a small piece of Marshall Road that was approved as part of FDP 1 Phase 9 with the Morgan Ranch application. And that was to allow for access to Block 4, if you remember. That's that restaurant parcel, and then the parking associated with it. So there is a stub here that extends down to the south, and then there's more of Marshall Road that extends up to the Tesla lot in order to coordinate these development applications. So the site plan proposal is shown here. This has also been integrated with the parks plans for Parks 1 and 2. In general, the primary things that we're working to connect here are the multi-moles of transportation. So the area in white is what's proposed as part of this FDP, and the area in gray are adjacent final development applications that have been approved already. The primary pedestrian access will occur in the southwest corner of the bridge, and it's a stair access that'll lead from the south to the north down towards one of the creek trails that are proposed as part of the park application. The primary bike path access will occur on the northwest corner in order to get to the Coal Creek Regional Trail. And the ADA access that's been coordinated will occur in the southeast corner. And that's where grades will just allow for that access without any stairs. So the site plan application also includes street sections. But the site plan plan sheets within the FDP proposal also include these street sections, which clarify just how each of the northern and southern segments of Marshall Road will be constructed. So essentially, we have a much wider right-of-way north of Marshall Road. And what you're seeing through this proposal is it tapering down to the 50-foot width that was approved for the bridge. And this bridge decking, and basically the floodplain improvements associated with putting a bridge across the creek, was approved and has been coordinated already with floodplain development permits at a 50-foot width and a 90-foot span. So the one thing I want to point out within all the site plan sheets is that they they basically show a transparent view of the bridge in order for us to see where those improvements underneath it are existing or are planned. So for the Coal Creek Regional Trail, obviously, that alignment's already in place, as is the Coal Creek creek bed itself. The proposed trail, like within the park, south of the creek, has not been constructed yet. But that 90-foot span, and when I say span, I mean the length of the crossing, is coordinated in order to allow for these elements and allow for adequate spacing in between them. And then the 50-foot width is what was agreed to as well, in order to narrow this down and get the bare minimum, we kind of need to get traffic. And those elements here are shown on a following slide, so I'll get into that here in a second. But these are the blown-up sheets. Essentially, you have kind of a northern site plan that shows the northern part of Marshall Road, and now north is to the left. It shows that we have a detached sidewalk at seven and a half feet in width that kind of has greater distance from the road, and there's just more spacing on this side. And then it tapers down and it becomes an attached sidewalk. Are you guys seeing my cursor all right? I'm trying to step out, I want to make sure it's working, okay, good. So we become, it becomes an attached sidewalk as you get across the bridge, and that happens on both sides of Marshall Road. And then, once you get across the bridge, it comes back, and you'll see this more clearly on future drawings, but it becomes a detached sidewalk again. So what we have is, you know, a tree lawn, and then it becomes just sidewalk as you get in across the bridge, and it narrows to that 50-foot width. But this also shows in a little bit better detail the alignment of the trails, as well as Coal Creek, as it crosses, as the bridge crosses that area. So the other thing that's getting coordinated as part of this development application is a retaining wall within the northeast corner, so this is in Park 2. And the way that this has been designed is to actually have it flare out a little bit and get it some separation, so that we don't have a retaining wall immediately next to the sidewalk here. So it curves, and it's at six feet at this high point here, and then it narrows, or it shortens to about a three-foot wall. And the thing you need to understand too from this is that this perspective is taken, so this is the elevation view of that retaining wall, and that's taken from within Park 2, looking back to the west. So it's six feet here at this high point, and then, you know, goes down to an average of about a three-foot height. And then it ties in to an existing retaining wall, or pretty much ties into an existing retaining wall for a detention facility here. So you're not going to see that from the right-of-way, but you are going to see what has it been intentionally built in as some additional landscape area, so you don't have that railing right along the sidewalk here. And the railing's required, because the drop is greater than 30 inches in height. So this is that other segment of their their final, or their site plan sheet, so it's the southern segment. And I've added in a portion of that northern segment, just to see how it all kind of connects. But essentially, that right-of-way narrows to, well, the improvements for the bridge deck narrows to 50 feet, and then it goes back out to 60 feet. And we have little bits of tree lawn that get wider as you move to the south, on both sides of the street. And then again, the development limits for this end at Block 4 on the east side of Marshall Road, and extend all the way to Creek View Way on the south side. And we asked, and they were able to accommodate a wider sidewalk within Park 1 here, because we think that this is going to be a fairly heavily-used area. So this was Alex Aronello's suggestion. And they were able to accommodate a nine-foot-wide sidewalk that leads you to the stairs, because that's going to be your primary access to get down to the creek along Marshall Road. There's also various access points within the park that will lead you kind of more meandering to get down to the park improvements, like you see on the north side here. But this is that section view that I was mentioning of the actual bridge. So it is a 50-foot-wide span. And this is that segment of the bridge that kind of crosses all of that 90-foot width. So it's a little it's a little misleading to look at it this way, and but you'll get it, you'll understand it here in a second, a little bit more. But we have these bridge kind of implements, or the bridge walls at each four corners. And those are actually outside of that 90-foot span. So why we highlighted this 90-foot span is just so you can understand the extent of the actual bridge decking. And the improvements are, we'll have two 11-foot-wide travel lanes in each direction, two five-foot-wide bike lanes, and then seven and a half feet for pedestrians before we get to the required railing. And that takes up an additional foot and a half to get you to the 50 feet. This illustration also shows how this bridge is going to get constructed. So it's got pre-stressed concrete as the foundation of the bridge span. And then it requires caissons as part of the abutment walls. So this is the plan view that kind of helps you see the form in a little bit different detail. And again, in yellow, that 50-foot-wide width is highlighted. And then, once you get beyond that 90-foot span, is where the abutment walls that you're going to see, and you've seen in the illustrations already, occur. So we're going to have these brick walls in each four corners. And in the southwest corner is where the stairs come down, kind of cascade down that wall. But again, this flares back out to a wider width, wider sidewalk dimensions. And then the other element that we'll see here in a second. But this, and then again, this perspective view kind of helps you see where landscape improvements end, and the sidewalk goes from being an attached sidewalk to, a detached sidewalk, excuse me, to an attached sidewalk. And this illustration's also helpful to show you when the railing stops and starts. So that railing is required for vehicle safety, and it stops midpoint kind of on the first tower column. And then it picks back up after the the bridge, brick walls actually serve the same purpose, but it does have to go down a certain distance here. And then it picks back up until, and it ends when the grade from the park matches the grade from the right-of-way. Any questions so far? I know I told you two slides, I think I'm six or eight.
No?
No? Okay. Okay. So this is the elevation view of the bridge, and that's another thing that makes this application different from your standard, you know, right-of-way improvement. This is actually three-dimensional, so we have elevations that help clarify the height of the bridge, the dimensions, and the spans. Again, you can see, you know, what's important here is, you know, the trail locations and the clearances that you're going to have on each side, both are over 11 feet. And then the separation you have from Coal Creek. This is the regional trail on the north side, and this is the trail that's more local within the park, that's going to occur on the south side of the creek. And again, this shows the brickwork, which shows both, you know, some banding that occurs within the columns, as well as insetts within these columns to help just make it unique and make it a more attractive architectural feature. They also have metal caps on each of the two towers that are proposed in all four corners. We'll get into those. They're actually shown here, so we'll discuss them here. But those metal caps are going to be painted in black, that'll match the railing that's proposed. And then the orange brick is the same orange brick that you'll see within the Morgan Ranch application in various locations. That includes some of the apartment buildings on Block 6 and 7, as well as several of the Main Street buildings, and in certain locations within the commercial buildings within Block 7 as well. So it all ties together. And then you see that they're proposing three sign locations. The only place that the Downtown Superior sign is not going to be seen on one of these four walls is on the stairs, and that's where we're proposing, or they're proposing just a directional sign to lead folks up the stairs to get to Main Street. And then the other sign that would be included is a Marshall Road sign, and this would be in each direction, and it would be over the Coal Creek Regional Trail. The other thing that this shows in a little bit different detail is the design of the stairs. So it's this kind of cascading effect, where you have two landings and three sets of stairs that get you get you up to Marshall Road. This spans over 60 feet, I think it's 62 and a half feet. And then each of these columns is also roughly 32 feet in length. And they vary in height from, I think it's like roughly 14 feet to over 22, 24 feet. This wall went up slightly since the staff memo went out. So it now stands seven feet tall, where it was, I think it was related as five and a half feet tall above the adjacent sidewalk. Now it's seven feet, which I think will feel a little bit better in terms of being right size for people walking across the bridge. So lighting, as I mentioned, was one of the other elements. This has been designed, and we're seeing three different lighting types here. But the Cobra Head Light, kind of the primary streetlight that is on Marshall Road currently, will be extended. And then the transition point to the Ashbury Lights that you see everywhere else in downtown will occur at this intersection of Marshall and Creek View Way. Those Ashbury Lights will also be included in the park design, and it'll be used to light these stairs. And then the applicant is proposing uplights for their Downtown Superior signs. So these are actually mounted in the ground and will shine up to light the signage for Downtown Superior that's proposed on the bridge. The other two elements of lighting that are included in this application are Festoon lights that will be underneath the top rail of the bridge, and path lights that'll be underneath the bridge. So I wanted to mention real quick that the intent of this was, you know, they wanted to limit the improvements within this span. It's a cost savings issue as well, but the 50-foot width, we wanted to maximize the space for the multi-modes of transportation that are actually crossing. So with this design and with the Cobra Head Light features, you don't have any streetlights that'll impede traffic flow within the sidewalk here. And it maximizes that as a seven-foot kind of clear zone for pedestrians to get through the sidewalk area. That's also the reason that that landscaping ends. But it also saves you, it's just, you know, just intelligent design in terms of not having to irrigate, going across a bridge, or run electricity. So the electricity basically ends, you know, right where these trail lights have to be installed. And irrigation ends, you know, with the the tree lawns and the planters that you're going to see here in a second. But again, we have adequate lighting underneath the bridge in order to have those paths be safe at night. And the cut sheets for the Festoon lighting is shown here. And the lighting for underneath the trails is shown underneath that. And then lastly, the landscape design is really a continuation of the landscaping that's been approved for Marshall already. But it includes, you know, both grass, like sod tree lawns with trees, as well as groupings of plantings, and these are perennials, as well as ornamental grasses. And then that extra space for landscaping, you can see north of the sidewalk, or actually, it's east of the sidewalk on Marshall in this location. So it's still densely landscaped and a well-landscaped street space, and it, you know, picks up as soon as it's able to on each side of the bridge. But it also doesn't interfere with the architecture of the bridge, as you can see in some of the perspective views, which I have, but I also know Angie has. So I'll probably leave that to her. I did want to mention real fast that the staff memo covered all of the exceptions that were required and mentioned through this, one of which was the lighting that we just discussed. The town code and the PD for Downtown Superior requires fully cutoff and downlit fixtures. And this will require an exception to ensure that those lights don't spill over. And we're already working with the applicant to get sufficient detail and maybe language in order to ensure that happens. I just think, and they've told us that those uplights can be locked so that they won't accidentally go up further and maybe shine in somebody's face, or if they're hanging out on the top of this wall here. So we're pretty confident in that regard. The Festoon lighting will also be an exception, because the bulbs are intended to be seen, and it's decorative, and it's a fairly low light level. But that's something that we see as a character thing for, and I should show it here, for making this bridge stand out. So those are two exceptions, staff is supportive of both of them. The other exception has to do with the width of Marshall Road here. The right-of-way width in total still stays 60 feet. The PD showed it as 36 feet from curb to curb, and now it's 32 feet. Again, it has all the transportation elements that we're looking for. It's just in a little bit of a tighter area. And in exchange, we have more space for tree lawns and the wider sidewalks that we're getting. So those are the main exceptions that were included. The other thing that the previous park FDP included was a stair connection on the northeast corner of the bridge, and that's been eliminated. There's a detention facility in this that serves regional detention needs now, so that connection no longer really makes sense. And it really makes more sense to try to tie pedestrians into the more local trail on the south side of the creek than it does to put them onto the regional trail. So the focus on the north side is to get a bicycle connection to that regional trail and to provide a safer connection point, so that there's no conflict when pedestrians come down into this trail, which will be highly-used, but used at a lot less speeds than the regional trail that bikers go through all the time. So cyclists, I guess is how I should refer to them.
Can I ask a quick question on that? Sorry, can I ask a quick question on access?
Yes.
So can you maybe pull up a different aerial, or how would folks from Element Hotel get down into the park then? So.
That's a good question. And that's something that we've asked them to look at a little bit more. But the compromise was we're putting in a sidewalk, can you see this now?
Yep, crosswalk there.
Yes, crosswalk, thank you. Cross Marshall Road to tie right into this path. And we're also looking for a more informal trail that'll connect, you know, here. That's a little bit more difficult with, it's not going to be ADA accessible, and Jim's related, that there's some steep grades that they have to deal with. So it's kind of a cost thing, but it's also, you know, does it make sense in relation to, you know, there are a lot of connection points already. So it'll be something that gets figured out through that final park design.
Okay, and is Alex comfortable with the crosswalk, given the curve and then the grade change going up to the bridge in that location?
He's the one that asked for it, so.
I am here, yeah.
Hi, Alex, okay.
I'm on the line, yeah. And I'd rather have the crosswalk south of the Element intersection. It'll be narrow at that point, you won't have to have the turn lane to cross. So I recommended that it be done at that location.
Okay, great, thank you.
So if I may piggyback on that, will there be stop signs at those pedestrian crosswalks? Or how will they be differentiated from just the street? They will have a painted crosswalk, I guess. We will, you know, monitor that to see what the volumes are and whether we need additional protection, like a rapid-flashing beacon. But right now, it's just a painted crosswalk. And Alex, you're not seeing a need for a stop sign or anything there? Any kind of street light or a stoplight or anything like that? No, I don't think so. I think, you know, there are a lot of connections here. That particular one is, will be used by the, probably most likely, the hotel occupants. And we'll just have to see what those volumes are, and whether they're, those people are going to come down and use the park facility or not. We'll have to monitor that, but I don't think, I would think we'd be doing a rapid-flashing beacon before we do a stop sign or a stoplight. Okay, thank you.
I had a similar question about the north end of the bridge where it joins Creek View Way. What stop, I saw one stop sign on one of the drawings. I just wondered what other pedestrian protection there's going to be at that junction.
That's an always-stop condition. And Jim, maybe, was that raised, or is that, that had some colored concrete? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, as part of the Morgan Ranch application, we had shown a decorative concrete intersection there at Creek View and Marshall. It's not raised, but it is decorative concrete, and it is four-way stop.
Thank you.
I guess I'll go next. Is that five-foot bike lane dimension on a bridge, does that include two-foot curb and gutter within that five feet? Or is that five feet of concrete that's all on same grade?
It includes a curb and gutter. It includes a curb and gutter.
So there's really three feet of asphalt for the cyclists there?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Jim, maybe Jim can answer that because I'm not sure we have a gutter in that location. Jim, can you elaborate?
Actually, Stephen, can you go to the bridge cross-section sheet?
Yeah, I think there's a concept image that's maybe throwing me off. I would've assumed it's all concrete, same grade, but.
It's not all concrete. It is an asphalt deck. The asphalt helps protect the, protect the bridge. But it's, so there's, there is a differential of concrete versus asphalt right there at the edge.
But is this accurate, Jim, this image here?
That is a good question. I am not the bridge designer, but I will look up some drawings while we're talking about something else and I will let you know.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd have the same concern as Ben. Three feet is kind of narrow if you have a crack or a gap, you know, between the asphalt and the concrete in there.
For a main entrance into a town center, it's not the most welcoming bike facility.
Yeah, I suspect that'll be a recommendation we'll wanna maybe put in at the end. I agree. That was on my list. Stephen, did you have additional presentation or are we fully into questions at this point?
That was my, into my presentation, but the applicant has a presentation as well.
Oh.
We'll see if there's any more questions for staff, but go ahead, Jim.
So on the bridge itself, the asphalt extends all the way to the curb, so there is no separate gutter pan on the bridge. As you get past the bridge, the gutter pan does pick up as a standard gutter pan.
And does it widen though? Does the bike lane then widen at that point?
The bike lane does not widen, but you do have the tree lawn that starts, gets pedestrians a little further away. But the curb-to-curb dimension is the same from the bridge down to Creekview. North of the, north of the bridge, the road kind of fans out and it gets, everything gets wider.
All right.
So that's like what Jim's talking about, basically it extends from the, into the bridge decking all the way to Creekview Way. With that 32-foot curb-to-curb dimension.
And is that three-foot condition typical throughout the rest of the town center for the widths of the bike lanes?
So five feet is allowed. I wouldn't know where the split between gutter and asphalt goes. Jim might know more.
Yeah, the standard gutter is two feet wide. Most of the rest of the bike lanes in downtown are six feet from the stripe to the gutter pan. I'm personally a pretty avid biker and a five-foot bike lane isn't awesome, but it doesn't really scare me. I would still use it, even with the gutter pan there.
You might not let your four-year-olds ride on it though.
I might not, but I also probably wouldn't let my four-year-old ride through the intersection of Marshall Road and McCaslin either, so.
If I can jump in, I think the rationale behind this cross-section, we felt that there was gonna be a lot of pedestrian activity. Especially if there are events going on in the town center. Or in the area directly below the bridge, that we may have a lot of pedestrians on the bridge that may, we probably wanted a wider sidewalk in that area. The bikes, that's the one area we had, we had a compromise between the bikes and pedestrians. And we, we felt that this was gonna be a high pedestrian area right on the bridge where people would have great views. And they may want to tend to stop and watch the activity underneath the bridge. So that was the rationale behind the section that we negotiated with the developer.
Could we squeeze the travel lane by another six inches?
What do we have? Do we have 11-foot lanes here?
That's right.
Yeah, it's 11-foot lanes, Alex.
Yeah, we, I think in other areas in the town center, we go down to 10 and a half foot lanes. So that, to me, I would, I would do that rather than taking any sidewalk away.
That's correct. We have 10 and a half foot lanes on Spirit Drive and among other places.
We got seven and a half foot wide sidewalks there, so to get an extra foot, it would have to be six inches on each side.
Well, if we wanted to bring the, the side, if we wanted to bring the bike lane to a full six feet, the sidewalk is gonna narrow by a full foot. So we have.
Not if you took six inches from the travel lane though.
Oh, yeah, yeah. If you want to take six inches from the travel lane and then narrow the sidewalk by six inches as well, you'd get that foot. Correct.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we can keep, I don't know if we want to talk more now or in discussion on this one as we're kind of debating through, but.
Where are Alex and Jim to think about while we maybe get through Angie's presentation?
Sounds good.
Yeah, Stephen, could you point out the, there's some 30-foot lights in this project, right? Streetlights?
Yep.
Could you just point your mouse to where those are or show me? Yeah.
Oops, sorry.
Oh, that was a good shot.
But yeah, this one is a Cobra Head Light. It stands, it's 28 and a half feet to this point and it gets up to 30 feet once the arm goes up and the arm extends out over 10 feet. But yeah, there's six of them, three on each side of the bridge. And they're, they just require a lot, I mean, fewer fixtures in order to do that. And it, it was what was kind of required to accommodate the width of Marshall Road further, further northwest. And so the proposal was to continue it here and then it also had the added benefit of not requiring any lighting over that bridge decking that I mentioned earlier.
Okay. And I was just thinking more about impact of the hotel rooms, right? And then our neighbors in Lewisville that are viewing this thing, I haven't really looked at the site view from, from across the highway, but. Let's see. Oh, okay. I can bring that up later. Okay. Any other questions before we move on to an applicant presentation? Okay. All right. So next up is, Bill, are you doing the applicant presentation?
I'll start it with a very short introduction and I'll let Angie carry most of the, most of the weight.
Sounds good.
But, you know, Bill Janks, RC Superior, great to see everybody. Thank you for making the time in this special format. And of course, thank you, Stephen and staff for working so hard to make this work. We've been working on the design of the bridge for over a year. I think we made our first presentation to staff in May of last year. Is that right? And we were working on design for a few months before that in earnest, so we've been working on this a long time. There's a lot of effort that's gone into not only the bridge design on MIG's side with Angie, but also the creek design and all of the hydraulics that Jim has worked with Matrix on. And of course, all the other consultants and lighting and everything. So we did have, we started with about seven or eight very different sort of design concepts that we showed to staff about a year ago. And, you know, through discussions and a few meetings with them, narrowed down on this one that we agree is a great solution and consistent with the architectural character of downtown. So we think it's a great addition and we're excited to make the next, make the connection and see the rest of the park come to fruition alongside. So obviously I'm here for any questions, especially as it comes to timing, I'm sure we'll want to talk about at the end. But I'll let Angie jump in for now and walk you through some more of the design and some of the renderings. And then we can obviously answer any questions.
Thanks, Bill, and thanks everyone for joining us. I'm going to.
Angie, if you could just introduce yourself real quick, that would be great. So we have that for the record.
Oh, yes, yes. So Angie Holtz with MIG. And so we are the landscape architects and urban designers working for Ranch Capital. And I will introduce the rest of the team in a couple more slides here. Okay, do you guys see a presentation?
We do.
Okay, great. Okay, so Marshall Road Bridge. Stephen, thank you for the great intro. You saved a lot of effort on my part going through all the technical details. So I'm going to mostly focus on the aesthetics and then add a little bit more background. So we all know where we are now. Hotel is here. McCaslin is over here. And this bridge serves as the gateway to the future downtown, which will be right here. Again, we, so the design team, we have civil resources. So Jim Rossovich as a civil engineer. OTAC is the structural designer and their office is actually just across the road in Lewisville. Clanton and Associates is the lighting consultant. And then Hydrasystems is the irrigation consultant. And so we actually have worked on a bunch of bridges together throughout the area. So it was nice we could come back together and do this project. And again, the town is responsible for the parks on either side of the bridge. And Ranch Capital is responsible for the bridge. And so we're hoping that perhaps the construction of everything can be coordinated and happen together over this next year. We'll have to see. But our timeline, and this is sort of proposed, it's not final. But we would hope to get, you know, approval early summer and then be able to complete our construction drawings. And do permitting throughout the summer, put it out to bid. And then hopefully start this next fall and do construction through 2021. So that is our proposed timeline. Again, Stephen did a great job pointing out where we are. There's, I think one thing to note is this boundary that's hatched in the darker gray. And hopefully you can all see that on your screen. This is the creek improvement boundary. So that was completed this past year and that should all be growing in pretty soon. So when you look at the renderings and you see the riparian area next to the creek, that is the FEMA, or the project that was funded by the FEMA grant. So we'll actually interrupt part of that project to build the bridge. And then, of course, the parks will come up to the edge of the creek. So these connections, the stairs, the connections down here to this path. The connections down to the regional path are all actually part of the park design. So we're not looking for approval per se on those. We're focused on the items within this boundary, so the area in white. Okay, so the size of the structure, actually we did not determine it. The structure was determined by the drainage study. And so we didn't actually, you know, want to go back and redo any of that. So of course, you know, there's a certain amount of space underneath that FEMA wants so that the creek flows can be unrestricted during a flood event. And then a certain amount of capacity that can be held by the parks if there were another flood. And again, that was all done, the drainage study and the size of the bridge was done with the project by the, that was a partnership between the town and urban drainage. So as Stephen mentioned, we have 90 feet from abutment wall to abutment wall. And then about 11 feet from the top of the path to the top of the box structure. And then a 50, or a 60-foot right-of-way encompasses the whole thing. And then this is just showing this bottom part. If you say you made the bridge wider, why does FEMA carry? It pushes this thick blue line out, so you're, you know, you're expanding the floodplain. And I'm probably butchering that because I'm not a civil engineer. But basically if we mess with the size of the structure, it has a bit of a ripple effect. So we just stuck with what we were given. We already talked about this, so apologies, this is incorrectly shown. So this is not a concrete gutter right here, so bike lane, five feet. We'll talk about moving some of these dimensions, whether we take away another half a foot from the sidewalk and give it back to the bikes or from the cars. And then one of the things that we, we changed from the beginning is we used to have this guardrail wrapping all the way around the column and going to this other column and continuing. And we decided that, and that was, that came from a highway, federal highway regulation. But we decided that we think we can get away with interrupting the railing and providing an overlook area on all four sides, which will be really great. So these people right here are looking over a three and a half foot tall wall, standing next to about a seven-foot-high column. And this planter on top is actually, this one's about five feet in diameter, this one's about six feet in diameter. So that just gives you a sense of scale. So aesthetics. We have a lot of different styles going on around our project site. So another orientation, this is the site as it stands today. Marshall Road ends here, the Element Hotel is here, Tesla's right here. And then you can see the Highway 36 pedestrian bridge beyond. So this is the route of the new bridge, approximate route, if not to scale at all. This is the regional trail below. And then you can see the little baby trees starting to grow. So, you know, this grading will change with the park design and once we build the bridge, but that's the approximate location. And then the McCaslin underpass is to the left of us and the US 36 underpass is to the right. And when you're standing right here, I would say they are kind of far away. You're not really seeing them. They're covered by vegetation. So here's the McCaslin underpass up in our top left. The US 36 underpass in the top right. There's some art that the art committee had put, pasted onto that. The McCaslin underpass has a lot of riprap that's exposed. We're planning to bury the riprap to make it a nicer experience in the park. And so you won't see that on our, on the Marshall Bridge. And then this is just the pad bridge over Highway 36. So those are some of the bridge styles that surround us. And then, of course, to the north of our site, we have Tesla and the Element Hotel. And then not pictured here is the new, or maybe it is, can't see in my own picture, is the entry sign. Yeah, the entry sign's not in, but now there is the Downtown Superior entry sign right here. And then the creek improvements and, which were really generous. And there's a lot of nice sandstone along the creek that, you know, people will be hiking through the riparian area to get to. But they will and they can, you know, sit on these stones by the creek. And then this bridge will be the gateway to the future downtown Superior. And in the park, you still have mountain views as well. And so we decided, since it is an introduction to downtown, to play off of some of the design features that were already described in the Morgan Ranch application. So that's where we drew our, most of our inspiration from. And so we start with these beautiful drawings from the structural engineer. And then our job was to make the structure aesthetically pleasing. So we, as I mentioned, are playing off of Downtown Superior. So simple, classic materials, natural concrete, the orange brick color that you can see over here in this image. And then the white signage from the Downtown Superior entry signs, which there are two of. which there are two of now, and then black steel. So in the renderings, the steel looks maybe gray. And some that's just, you know, some places you're standing, it'll look black, some it'll look gray. It just depends on how the light is shining. So those are sort of, this is our materials palette that we applied. And you'll see over here in this 3D rendering, that's the sort of articulation and style we played off of. This is a view looking east, so Highway 36 is beyond. There'll be a future multipurpose field on the other side of this bridge. Where we're standing is the new trail, not the regional trail. The regional trail's on this side. The new trail, and then this will be a sloped area down to the trail, and then the stairs that go back up. Now pictured here are the lights that go with Parks 1 and 2. And we just did that to not block the views of the actual bridge structure. So we took a liberty there. We wanted to put the Marshall Road Bridge lettering right above the regional path. So as bikers are cruising, or as Stephen said, cyclists are cruising along this path, you know, they can look up and see where they are, and then also see the downtown Superior logo and understand that, oh hey, you know, Main Street's just over here, maybe I should stop and take a visit. Again, the Xcel lights, we continued from the Marshall Road design that already exists. And that was also in the design guidelines that were determined years ago, back when, maybe even when Lisa was in a completely different position. So that process started a long time ago, it was amended many times, but the lighting characteristic always kind of kept Marshall Road having these Xcel lights. And like Stephen said, it's because of the curve of the road. And then also, we looked at doing different types of lighting, but it just didn't work. So we just, we stuck with the recommendation. And then, the benefit of that is we can get more trees in, and so I'm always a supporter of that. This view just is a close-up of the columns and describes the materials. I think you all get it. We've got bricks, steel, concrete, steel railings. We have black lettering on the concrete structure to provide contrast. And there'll be planting with the Parks 1 and 2 design that'll highlight the bridge structure. Close up, we're still looking east, close up by the stairs. We'll find a way, hopefully, to light this. And again, that's all dependent on what we come, what the environmental consultant comes back with. So we need to make sure that we're not polluting the creek at all with light. But we think we'll be able to provide directional lighting that shouldn't, should be just fine. We're still looking east, we're sitting on a rock by the creek right now. This is a view at night, Stephen already showed. And not shown here is the lighting on this wall. We'll add that later in our 3D view. And then these festoon lights, we have detail in the FDP application. It might be hard to decipher because the lights are small. So it's hard to get an overall view, but then let's see how it works. But we're proposing that the lights are mounted on the back of the rail and encased in a channel, so that they'll be secure. And then you won't see any of that housing from the other side, but you will see the, you know, you'll still get the mood of the festoon lights on both sides. This is a view of the stairs, just for scale. Again, these stairs go with Parks 1 and 2, but we just wanted to show that this is, you know, the scale of the bridge and the amount of stairs up and down. So it'll be a nice grand entry into the parks from the bridge. Again, we talked about these overlooks, just a close-up looking north. We're on top of the bridge now. And then as you get off of the bridge, the tree lines start. And one benefit of that is we don't have to introduce water on top of the bridge structure. And long-term, that's just good for everyone, to not have to mix water in with the structure and have any potential for failures. These pots on top will have permanent irrigation, though, but it'll be designed in a way that it's contained and safe. And this is just a close-up of one of the overlooks. And then not shown here are the mountain views to the west. A close-up looking towards the Element Hotel. And you'll see the cyclist will have, hopefully, two and a half more feet to three more feet once that gutter is shown correctly and we maybe move the striping. This is a view looking northwest. So we're in Parks 2 now. So pretend you're at the future potential restaurant, and you're looking down at the parks and the bridge. Maybe you're standing on a roof deck at the restaurant. And these are the creek improvements down here, you have a good view of those. And all the planting will be coordinated between the two projects. Okay, so let's see if this works. I'm going to click on this flythrough, and, no, it has sound if you watch it on your own, so you can hear the creek, but let me try this. Are you all still seeing my PowerPoint?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, let me do a different share. Do you see? Is it moving?
It's a flythrough now.
Looks like it's working.
Okay, I'm gonna start it over. Here we go.
It's a lot smoother if you download it and view it on your own, obviously, but you get the idea.
All right. Okay, so I will go back to the presentation, and then thanks for listening to me talk, and we'll, I guess, open it up to questions.
Yeah, thanks Angie and Bill. So at this point, commissioners, we, this is really time for questions and steering away from comments until we get into discussion. I don't think we have any members of the public still up and kind of watching, but there's no attendees, so it is just us. We just want to free-form it and see how that goes we can.
Well, I raised my hand to be...
Oh, I see, yes, yes. Commissioner raised her hand, it was raised, basically.
I guess, from a question standpoint, once again, I think, out of all the presentations we had, one of the most exciting ones that we've had over the last couple of years was for Park 1 and 2. And my biggest concern was going to be the bridge. But aesthetically, I think that, that I love the, you know, I love the overlooks, the four overlooks. But was there any consideration done to the center 90-foot span on each side, on the east and west side of the bridge, to provide any extended overlooks to, you know, that would provide seating, whether it's just six feet, eight feet, some kind of a platform that extends out off of the bridge for the public to be interacting with nature in that sense? Because I think it would have added, you know, another dimension within that, you know, the whole aesthetics of it. And would have broken up, when you're coming from the east or west on any of the paths, it would have broken up the, you know, that 90-foot span, because it really looks like very nice corners and then a span of bridge. And I just wondered if any consideration was given to, and you got the platforms or anything in that area.
Bill or Angie, which one of you is going to take questions?
We can both, we can both handle them. I mean, for my part on that, I don't think we specifically looked at any designs that included kind of bulbouts at the center span. Obviously, that does add a level of structural complication that isn't necessary on a normal bridge. You know, the structural design has those big box beams that are like two feet wide by 90 foot long, and those are what carry the whole span of the bridge. If you have something pop out in the middle, now you have to have the cross-section, basically cantilevering out from those, that creates a whole new structural system that doesn't exist in the existing design. So it would create a fair amount of complication that isn't there. I don't know to what extent that would require looking back into the hydraulics and the creek, you know, underpass design. We were pretty careful to stay within the existing boundaries set by Matrix and Urban Drainage back when the original hydraulics were modeled for that creek improvement project, which was that 60-foot-wide by 90-foot span. And so I don't know that that would trip that or not, but it certainly creates some gray area. So, long answer short, no, we didn't really look at any options that included additional overlooks. I think the overlooks at the corners are great and work perfectly well for kind of providing pedestrians some extra space to step off the path and be able to look over the park, whether there's a concert happening or a special event happening down there or whatnot. And I think, to some extent, keeping people moving across the bridge instead of congregating mid-span is potentially a good thing, just from a safety standpoint. You don't want people, you know, jumping off the middle of the bridge into the creek in a high-water event or something like that, so.
Any other questions?
I might also add, I was, been out there many times, and recently, it's pretty loud up here. You're still hearing Highway 36. So I think that if you want to enjoy the creek, that the best place is from the parks, actually, and it's going to feel a lot nicer down here. And yeah, it's a big bridge, but it's not as big as some of the ones, like the one in Golden, or the few in Golden. It's more of a, we kind of wanted the bridge to feel nestled in the park, I guess. We wanted it to be a gateway, but also for it to feel sort of friendly, if you will.
Thanks. I had a question about whether you guys have engaged the Arts Committee or Cultural Arts. Will they be reviewing this plan? And I don't know if that's a question for Stephen or Bill or who.
So, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Right, this is Stephen. The, the bridge will be the town's. So at some point, once the wall, you know, those walls are opportunities, I think, underneath the bridge for murals or whatever. Obviously, they wouldn't go where the brick is going to be applied. But underneath, we could certainly go back and revisit that, but they have not been consulted to this point. And I think we also, you know, I don't know what the intent was, but the intent was for this application to come in in April and get to you guys. And we obviously had no applications come in until very recently, so, or no applications go to public meetings until very recently. So that opportunity probably was lost, if it ever existed. But it's not lost in the sense that this is a town-owned project. So I think the intent is to have those opportunities throughout downtown Superior, wherever we can have them. And it's certainly, it's certainly not lost in the sense that it's the town's possession. So we'll have that control in the future, once we have it. The drive right now is to get it built and get it done as quickly as we can get it done. And so the first domino for this is really the bridge, and then the parks can be constructed as well. So everyone's anxious to get this approved, and we can certainly circle back to that.
We actually did have a, did have a short meeting. I forget if it was just sort of informal as part of something else, but with the staff liaison to the Cultural Arts Committee. And we did talk specifically about opportunities for art and murals on the bridge. At that point, we did have a larger wall exposed on the left side of this picture that actually, a lot of that got taken up with grade, which I think is a good thing ultimately, because the landscaping's more attractive than any wall would be, even with art on it. But that was one of the reasons that we created, we provided the really, the really even wall washer lighting underneath the bridge to light those walls. The idea behind that was that it'd be a perfect place for mural art on the walls underneath the bridge that would be well lit in the evening. So we certainly talked about it. I don't think we actually had a formal meeting with the full Arts Committee yet, but to Stephen's point, there are opportunities to engage them once we get this going.
And are you locked into the planners? The planners just, they sit empty on the other bridges half the year. I don't know, it seems like an amazing opportunity for art in about eight different places on this bridge of various types. Not that it couldn't, you know, they all have to be, planners are all have to be sculptures. There's all kinds of art opportunity, it looks like. Are we locked into this, or is this something that is open for adjustment as we move forward?
You know, I'd recommend leaving it with the planters, because planters require irrigation and drainage and lighting, whereas sculptures don't require irrigation and drainage. And so, you know, if we design it with the planters and provide the irrigation and drainage built into the superstructure, you have the option forever to do whatever you want. Again, the town along this bridge, if you'd like to change the planters out for art, that's an easy change. Whereas if you didn't design them with the planters, they'd be impossible to add down the line. You know, to be honest, it's a cost savings to get rid of the planters. And so, to some extent, that's, that's fine, and potentially a good fiscal sense. But I do, you know, I like the planters. I think they bring some landscaping and greenery up to that bridge level, which otherwise would be, you know, probably a 150 or 200-foot stretch with really no landscaping from, from sort of, you know, end to end, not just the span, but the additional, looks like 15 or 20 feet before there's a tree on either side. So I think bringing in some landscaping is nice and attractive. Obviously, it does need to be maintained, and I'd love to see it planted and not sit empty, so.
And I like, I agree, you know, putting the drainage and irrigation up there makes a whole lot of sense, so. Any other questions?
I think Lisa's got her hand raised, sorry.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Lisa.
Hey, yeah, so I guess my questions are related to the festoon lighting. I forgot to look, but what's the color temperature on that? If someone wants to tell me, I guess, is that a warm light or kind of a harsh light? And then from a town perspective, I'm wondering if we want to take on the maintenance and ownership of that lighting system? If, you know, sometimes, sometimes those things can look really great. Sometimes they don't age very well. And are they removable in a manner that doesn't damage the structure of the bridge or would require kind of maintaining, you know, doing some maintenance to clean that up? And are they, you know, can you switch out the lights easily when they burn out? I'm assuming they're LED, but if you have a defective unit or something like that. So I'm not sure who wants to take that question.
Both options are warm or harsh, I'm going to choose warm.
Yeah, me too, that's why I'm just wanting to be sure it's a warm light.
I'm going to let Angie tell us what the spec says. I would, I would hope they're in the 3,000 Kelvin range, but I don't know what the spec says right now.
Yeah, so I'm not sure that we actually specified that, so that was a good catch, Lisa. So we'll make sure it is warm. And these lights actually, yes, you can unscrew them and replace the individual bulbs. And we're planning for the housing for them to be a whole separate thing, so that it's not, you know, it's, it can be easily maintained. And you can also control them from afar. I would, and I am assuming that that's on all models, but... So there's a whole range of colors you can do. And I, I mean, I wonder if you could change the color at Christmas if you wanted, but I think we would just... But I think we would just probably specify the warm color for now. And then, um, yeah, you know, it, it could end up being a maintenance thing. If they didn't last, the good thing is it's hidden. So you could literally unscrew all the bulbs and stop. So you don't have to have it anymore if you don't want to. So it, yeah, it might be one of those things if we, if we do it now and you decide, the town decides we don't like it. You just unscrew the bulbs and no one ever knows the difference.
Okay. Thanks, Angie. David, Commissioner Harper, you had your hand up.
Yes, I wanted to ask a sort of not directly related question, which is what impact is the traffic over the bridge? Expected to have on the Marshall Road, McCaslin, Superior, Superior Plaza junctions.
Is that a question for Alex or?
Yes, this is Alex, Public Works Director. You know, the master traffic study that was done. Assume that the Marshall Bridge was to be built and extended. And we projected traffic volumes or the consultant projected traffic volumes and. At, at the Marshall McCaslin intersection, as you know, this is a minor leg right now. It'll come up in volume, but it's opposed by the, the triple left. And at some point we, we may have to add a double left on Marshall going westbound. We've thought about that. And then another potential. Addition is instead of having a triple left where there's a through left. You add another lane and have a free right turn lane going eastbound. And, and so the, the triple left and the left coming out of Marshall going. Westbound can go concurrently. And so that would increase the efficiency of the intersection. So we've, we've planned for those and we, we assume, you know, significant traffic using the Marshall Bridge. But it's, you know, it's all coming from the, the development town center that was originally planned.
Thank you. And Commissioner Harper, if you could raise your hand or if you raise your hand, yeah, just go ahead and raise it. And anybody else have any, you can either raise your hand or speak up with questions. Hi Anthony, you have your hand up. Commissioner Stewart?
I think you're muted maybe.
Hey, I'm unmuted now. Hey, so my question is related to accessibility of those towers over the bridge. You know, we talked about that earlier. I didn't, I didn't see that that would be, the bridge itself would be accessible and allow. Wheelchairs or walkers or anything like that to access, access the bridge and be able to take advantage of the overlook. Did I miss that?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see that either. Stephen, I don't know if, if you could go back over the connections, you know, up, up to downtown and back down to the trails and. Whether we even have ADA access ability, because it didn't look like it. Everything looked like it had stairs.
This is Jim. All the, all the sidewalks along the roads are ADA accessible. So you better get to this bridge from Creekview or from the north, from the Element Hotel. All of it is accessible.
So even from the, the Cold Creek Trail and the.
Well, from the Cold Creek Trail, there will be a, an accessible path to get to it. Yes. Angie's tracing it with her mouse right.
I see it. Okay. Gotcha. And how about going the other way? Going, going towards a hotel on either. Yes, I, I saw the trace up to.
Further, further north, just, just right at the Tesla sign, Angie. There's a trail that's accessible. It goes down to the park.
That's what's there now, right?
That's, that's not there now.
No, that's part of the park design.
So, so yeah, let me just show you the accessible routes real quick. So the sidewalk, Jim, the whole thing on top of the bridge is accessible, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So all of the sidewalk, we're lucky, is less than 5%. So if you're here, again, there's a lot of grades in these parks, but we think we'll be able to get accessible routes down in multiple places, which is nice. So you could go this way and then hopefully down this way. If you want to go over here, you cross over, you're already on the sidewalk and you can go this way and down. These are low water crossings. There's three. There's one not shown. And this path, as you know, the regional trail is pretty flat, which, you know, trails don't have to be ADA accessible. So there's, there's quite a few accessible routes, but yes, there are stairs for efficiency here and stairs for efficiency here. Did I miss anything, Stephen or Jim?
So the other trail going up to the Element Hotel, not the element, not necessarily the element hotels, but the north side of the. It'll be the north side or the north side of the bridge or what?
Northwest.
Northwest. Yeah. Side. Yeah. Is that a trail right there that I see? So the intent is for that to be accessible?
We'd like that. We're not sure if it's, if it's going to fit in the park budget or not. So that's sort of a to be determined thing. We drew it in as a wish.
So in any case, it's not part of this FTP. It's part of the, it's part of the construction documents that are being worked on right now.
Yeah, understood. Go ahead, Anthony.
So accessibility to the bridge, to cross the bridge from the west would be near the Tesla dealership. Right around there. Is that correct?
So both sidewalks on each side of Marshall Road are accessible all the way across the bridge into downtown Superior. And then the primary tie-in for ADA accessibility is in the southeast corner where Angie's got the label future park two. So you could either cross at the intersection of Creekview Way and Marshall Road and then come back up. If you were on the west side of Marshall Road, or you could cross at that crosswalk just south of the Element Hotel and get across the intersection. And then go down Marshall Road on the east side of Marshall Road and tie into that same sidewalk system within Park Two, which is east of the Marshall Road right away. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you for doing that.
Mr. Mattia, you are, have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Chairman McCool. Nice to see everybody. Stephen, thank you for your presentation and Angie as well. Commissioner Miller's comment about the width of the bike lane going across the bridge. I think that's a good idea to take that six inches from the vehicle lane and move it off to the cycling lane. I, I don't agree with Commissioner Reese's idea to put seating on the bridge. I think, I think the bridge should keep moving. I think people can stop at the overlook, but. I don't, I don't want people hanging out on this bridge for extended periods of time. And then as Bill mentioned, it would just, it would add additional costs since you'd have to can lever things out to the sides. And then Chairman McCool, your idea about the artwork along on those, on top of those pillars, I think is fantastic. I think we should really look into that, whether, you know, maybe not all of them, but maybe some of them receive some artwork and the others get the, the planner. And so Bill could save a few bucks on not irrigating some of those towers, but irrigating others. And also back to Commissioner Reese's comment that when we first saw this. Image of what this park in this area could be with the bridge and everything in there. The first time I saw that I was over the moon excited for this and I'm so happy that it's, it's finally here and that we're finally talking about it. I hope we get it approved and get rolling with it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant or for Stephen before we close?
I'll quickly, I'll quickly touch on the, on the bike lanes issue also, you know, in, in, in my opinion, I fully support making the vehicle lanes as, as narrow as public works will let us. In, in favor of giving more, more width to the, to the bike lanes. Personally, I wouldn't reduce the sidewalks from where they are. I think a seven foot sidewalk is, is generous, but not overly generous. And to make the, you know, to take six inches off of each sidewalk in order to give it to the bike lanes, crossing the bridge here where, where we are really trying to promote pedestrian traffic also from. Both the, you know, two, two hotels, both the element and the future hotel on the second pad, as well as Tesla, where people might, you know, drop their cars off for service and walk into the town center for a bite to eat. And with strollers and kids and people passing each other. I just personally, I, I think the seven foot sidewalks with a curb protection. Is of more benefit than an additional six inches on, on, you know, making a bike lane five or six foot instead of five foot six. So long story short, I would encourage taking as much width from the vehicle lanes as possible in order to slow traffic down. Give that to the bike lanes, but leave the, the sidewalks and curbs where they all are, where they are to, to have a generous pedestrian access also.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant or staff?
Commissioner McCool, I just had another comment or two.
Oh, go ahead. So I did see your hand up, but I thought it was left up. Go ahead, Commissioner.
That's okay. I did, I think I did leave it up. Yeah, I think the, the idea, if we, if we took a six inches and added to the bike lane, as vehicles are entering the downtown Superior, they will slow down. Because the road's getting more narrow. There may be more pedestrians and they will just slow down. And that's, I think ideally what we want is to everyone to drive slowly through downtown Superior. Nope, that was it. Oh, I'm sorry. One, one last thing was for Alex. I had a thought. So when you get done, and it doesn't have to do with this application, but maybe put it in your notebook. That lot four, where the restaurant's going to go, there's a entrance to that parking lot off of Marshall Road. We, we might want to consider that being an exit only. Cause I, I can foresee traffic coming south on Marshall Road and stopping to turn left into that parking lot and backing people up over the bridge. Pretty, pretty poorly. So maybe just put that in your notebook and we can address that when we get to lot four. That's it.
Okay. All right. So since we don't have any public comment and no attendees for public comment. If the applicant wants to wrap up or respond to anything, I'll give you a minute or two here. So if there's anything else you felt like you need to answer from what we asked. And if not, I'll continue on.
I think, I think we've tested on everything that I wanted to touch on.
All right. Anything else from staff before I close the public hearing?
Um, not, not really. I think that, I mean, I guess the only context I'd provide is, you know, that. It's similar to how Angie explained it in terms of the, the bridge dimensions. We've been working on this for a number of years now. I know maybe not feel that way, but the creek work is, 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 is difficult to accomplish. And it takes, you know, both state and federal agencies to coordinate. So the, kind of the footprint of the bridge is. What we're, what we've been working with for a number of years and, and changing that is difficult. But it's not also one of those changes that I push too hard on because once you, you dedicate space to a bridge, you lose space in the park. So it's kind of a push pull that I think we've, we've landed at, you know, a kind of a happy median there. And the focus really has been on the park elements that surround the bridge and then to make this an attractive feature, you know. While, you know, people are experiencing either park one or park two. And I think that, you know, this largely accomplishes that. So. And then, you know, to Lisa's point, we, we've had asked for more detail and I, I think it's a good question on the festoon lighting. I know I love my lights that are out on my patio, but they do require maintenance. And so it's something that we're, we're working with them on to ensure that. That it's easily maintained or, you know, that it's, you know, but it is something that we're trying to add some sort of element to the, to the bridge to make it as attractive as possible, both day and night. So, but we'll continue to keep those comments in mind.
Stephen, did you have one other exception you mentioned at the beginning of this?
Well, I can go over them real quickly. It's the lighting, both the uplighting and the festoon lighting. You can leave it on that slide there, Angie, the site plan. There you go. Just south of the Element Hotel, there used to be a staircase. So that's not really an exception to the. That was actually from the bridge or a trail connection down from Marshall to the creek. And that's no longer included because we have a detention facility here. So they are exploring whether or not they can do something more informal further east of the, kind of that corner where Angie's pointing with her, her cursor. But that's not an exception to the PD necessarily. It just differs from what you saw on the approved design for parks one and two. The real exception from the PDs associated with the lighting that I already mentioned. And then the width of the right away, which you guys have kind of commented on. It went from 36 feet wide down to the 32 feet wide. And, but it was always shown as a five foot wide bike lane. I don't know necessarily whether or not that five foot included the curb and gutter or not. So that's where we're trying to get some, some space back. And it seems like that space can come from the travel lanes unless Alex or somebody objects.
Okay. But that, that's already in the PD, right? So the 36 to 32, right?
The PD still shows it as 36, so it is an exception to get down to the 32. The overall right away is 60 feet. That's consistent. And really most of the dimensions are the same, but it was 30, 36 feet curb to curb. And, and now it's 32 feet.
And is that in the resolution to?
It's not in the resolution as an exception. It's just, it's asking for whether or not you support it.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. And then, all right. Okay. So, okay, I'm going to go ahead if everybody's okay and close the public hearing. I don't have a gavel, so we'll just officially close the public hearing. And we can go into discussion. I did, yeah. And then a motion if has appropriate. Anybody, Lisa, looks to give your hand up for comment. And then Commissioner Harper after that. So Commissioner.
Forgot to unmute myself. I am glad Ben raised this. Commissioner Miller raised this point. I think it's good. I think I would support taking the six inches from the travel lane. And I like, in this circumstance, I like the seven foot six wide sidewalk. I think, you know, if there's a family with young kiddos crossing the bridge by bike, I think there's also a decent chance they'd also hop up on the sidewalk and not use the bike lane. And so I think, you know, that, that width up there. It's an acceptable, I guess, compromise in my mind.
Okay. Commissioner Harper?
Yes, I think it's a very nice plan and a very nice layout. With respect to the uplighting on the bridge signs for downtown Superior, I'm not sure in my own mind that I think it's necessary. I'm not sure. I, I don't really feel it adds very much to the bridge and it just adds more light in the area. So if it were my bridge, I'd simply delete it.
Commissioner Miller, hand up. Commissioner, wait, you can go then.
Thanks. So I'll start off by saying I really like the aesthetics of the bridge. But I'm, I think what I'm kind of boiling this down to is we have a great regional trail tying families from Superior and Lewisville. Into what I assume this bridge is to be the kind of main entrance into our downtown. And a three foot bike lane with a two foot gutter is just not a very, it's not something I'd have a lot of pride in seeing in Superior. I understand we've kind of made some decisions along, along the rest of the road.
We lost you, we lost you, Ben.
Ben, again.
Sorry. Um, I just feel like we may, we maybe made some decisions in the past. So we're kind of 1990s bikeway design, but if this is a place where we really envisioned families getting on, I'm happy to take six inches or even a foot from the travel lane. I'll take that happily, but I wish we could add a couple of feet back to the bridge. Uh, because seven foot six inch wide sidewalk is, is not really wide enough for a shared use path either in a busy pedestrian downtown environment. You wouldn't want bikes and pedestrians sharing that narrow of a sidewalk either. So, you know, I'll, I'll compromise with the six inches or a foot from the travel lanes, but I wish we could have gone wider to begin with.
All right. And let's see, Commissioner Witty?
Um, yeah, I guess first of all, I love the bridge design. Again, I wasn't here when we originally did the parks and stuff, I think, but I, I think the design is really, it's, it's really well done and will be a great asset to the, to the community. So I did have a couple of things I agree with taking the six inches out of the travel lane also. And I would not take the six inches out of the sidewalk. So I agree with that. I think Commissioner Ritchie brought up something which is interesting that I don't know that we address when we do these and maybe Alex can address it or someone, but the cost of this bridge. Who looks at this? Not because, you know, we had this design, but who's looking at the maintenance cost? When we get this to say, okay, that we now just added a half a million dollars of maintenance to the town for its life. Do we look at that at all? Does anyone take a, you know, do we have that as part of this design? It seems like if we don't, we should because we're encumbering all of us for the next 50 years with this cost. And I think Commissioner Ritchie hit on it of having lights and other things that we're adding to maintenance. Is that what we want to do? So I just, I asked the question because I don't know the answer.
Steven or Alex, you want to take that?
Of course we look at, you know, long-term maintenance costs, but I think there's a certain uh, level of quality and aesthetic that we want in this community. Uh, in terms of the bridge itself, it's a pretty standard bridge, uh, you know, with the, you know, the concrete, pre, pre stress, pre-stressed members and so forth and the asphalt. So that's pretty standard, um, you know, the brick. Again, we don't end up doing a whole lot with the brick. Obviously the lighting and stuff is, has more to do with the, the park aesthetics than, than anything else. Uh, the lights on, on a bridge, on the roadway are pretty standard that we would continue. And they're, they're all over the place. And from a safety standpoint, we want, we want the lighting, the roadway lighting. The park lighting, I think is more of a parks issue and they'll have to be maintaining that. But we do have, uh, you know, we've raised the quality with the, the lighting that we have on Main Street and other areas that the town has assumed because that's not Excel lighting. The town has to replace those lights when they get hit. When they go out, we have to take on to it. So that, that is a burden that we've assumed with this development.
Well, just to follow up. So Alex, so like the planters where Commissioner McCool suggested, maybe we put art instead of something on the top. Again, there's maintenance costs to doing that. I, I just bring it up as maybe something we think about as we approve these things of, of the cost that we should, the town should be thinking about when we do this of, is this a $300,000 annual cost that we're adding to the town? So again, I support the bridge. I love it. I get the lighting and stuff. I just bring it up as more of a, maybe a longer term.
Sure.
And just to chime in too, I mean, certainly good, good point. However, you just have to, the commission, you know, the, the switch specifically be looking at for something like this for a final development plan, whether it complies with the PD. So those type of considerations wouldn't typically come into some kind of an application like this. So just, just for clarification.
I guess I'll just clarify that, you know, the, the whole project has, you know, been planned for, you know, almost 10 years at this point or over 10 years. When the final FDP was approved in 2013, all of these kind of costs are something that's been anticipated the whole time. So the town understands, and I think that, you know, we have a certain level that we expect. So we do, you know, maybe absorb more maintenance impacts than, than we would if we just had a standard concrete bridge. And I don't know whether or not Jim or Alex can tell you that, I mean, I think from the, the, the basic question or the most expensive portion of a bridge is that you have a bridge in general and that it's built a certain way and it has a certain lifespan. I don't know if that's 30 years or 50 years or, or what. But it's always been planned that we need this connection and the town has always had this direction. So, um, it's not, not considered, I guess is my answer to that. But, uh, and it's always been the direction. So.
So maybe in hopes of just nailing a couple, oh, Commissioner Stewart, you had a comment?
So yes, since we've moved on to comment, um, I wanted to say that with the addition of widening the bike lane, um, this bridge checks all of the boxes for me. Um, I think it's attractive. I think it's purpose, purposeful. And I really don't have any changes that I'd like to see made. When I originally saw this plan, I thought, well, are there some architectural additions that can be made? And after looking over it, I thought, not really. It looks good. It's attractive. And I think it'd be a good way to get people from McCaslin into downtown Superior. So that's just my comment on that.
Thanks, Commissioner Stewart. Um, anybody else before, I was just going to try to pull a couple of thoughts together. I don't see any more hand raises. So the, it, it seems like the, the, the bike lane is of, I had a couple of questions. I'm, I'm having a hard time following the details. So there's six inches that we can take out of the roadway total. Is that six inches on each side or a total of six inches?
Six inches on each side.
Correct. So we can reduce the vehicle travel lanes from 11 feet wide to 10 and a half feet wide in order to increase the bike lanes to five and a half feet on each side.
Okay. And then there was concern about the, the, the gutter pan. But then I thought I heard earlier that there is no gutter pan and that it'll all be asphalt.
Over the bridge, there's no gutter pan, but once Marshall Road resumes south of the bridge, there actually will be a concrete gutter.
Okay. And was that your concern, Commissioner Miller, that, that pan outside the bridge?
Uh, yeah, both. Anytime where we show a bike, an effective bike lane width, but we're not really accounting for a gutter pan within that, that's eating away at it. But also to go back to your original question, I wonder if we can, can we not go down to 10 foot lanes?
From rather than 10 and a half?
I mean, a lot of cities work with 10 foot lanes. I don't know if that's something Superior can't do for some reason.
Alex, can you chime in on that for us?
That'll be a, a little, you know, we have, I think maybe 12 foot lanes to the north on Marshall. And then I think we go down to 11 foot lanes at Creekview. So go on, go on a 10 foot lane, lanes. I'm, I'm kind of opposed to that just before. That's a, that's a pretty big difference based on what's north and then what's on, on the south. I think six inches wouldn't, wouldn't be very noticeable.
Um, and then, so we're not really addressing outside the bridge, right, Steven? So I mean, is that, is that still up for discussion of whether we have to have those pans or is that a later? Will that come?
Pretty, no, the, the two segments of Marshall Road, both north and south of the bridge are under this FDP. So those can be looked at. Um, I don't know that you're going to get rid of a concrete pan in a standard street section. So we could probably explore whether or not there's more room because that right away does widen back out to it pinches it 50 feet over the bridge and then it's a full 60 feet outside of the bridge. So it might be possible to just narrow that down to five and a half feet and then maybe have a more expansive bike lane further to the south. And that's something that we can work on with the applicant between now and the board meeting.
Okay. Commissioner Harper, do you have a comment on this or something? I'd like to stay on this topic till we're done, but.
Yes. I, I, I ride my bicycle quite a lot and I like a wide bike lane too. But I drive my car more than I ride my bike. And I'm discovering as I get older that I like to have more space between me and the oncoming traffic than I used to. So I would not like to take this road line down to less than 10 and a half feet. No.
Okay. Thank you. So it sounds like we could ask the town to take a look when it, when it goes back to 60 feet to see if we can widen the, the bike lane a bit to sort of offset that gutter pan a little bit more. That we all in favor of asking staff to, to do that without making it a full exception to the approval?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Anybody not? Okay.
No, I would agree with that.
Okay. All right. Give me one minute here. All right. Then the, I, you know, Commissioner Melia, you mentioned the planters and the art. I, I I sort of feel like I'm in favor of, of just putting irrigation and drainage and all these things, but I would be, I mean, I'd love to see us address art and just make that a, just a comment as we pass this along the board. Um, if everybody's okay with that, that we at least consider art other than the planters without changing the, the, the fact that we're putting in irrigation and drainage. Is everybody okay with that? Anybody not? Probably easier to say anybody not okay with that. It's probably a better way. Yeah.
No, I, I would agree with that. I think that there had been some mention made to that previously. And so I just think that if we don't lose sight of that and just keep that as a possibility, um, I would be, I would be fine with that. Sorry.
That you? Oh, sorry.
I'll be looking for my phone.
Yeah. Um, let's see.
I'd just like to say that I actually really like the planters and I would be reluctant to put anything in the way of a sculpture up there instead. I think the idea of doing artwork in the form of a mural on the flat walls under the bridge itself is actually excellent. I think that would be a great place to, to have them, but I really like having something living mixed up with all that brick and concrete that they have on the bridge deck.
I don't think there was a, a question of taking them all out or anything. It was maybe putting in a little bit, a mix of both, but. Let's see. And then do we have to talk about the lighting? And I think we were good on the lighting. Commissioner Ritchie, are you okay with, with the explanation you received?
I am. Um, yeah, I think it sounds like the applicant's going to confirm the color temperature and staff is going to kind of continue to talk maintenance, but based on the applicant's response that it's all removable and fairly easy to maintain, I'm comfortable with, with where it's.
Okay. So are we okay with the, um, the resolution as it is? If we can request staff to take our comments forward with, with it, without actually requiring them in the resolution? Or do we want to, do we want to take the, I mean, we may, we, we may want to put an exception in for the bike lanes, the six, you know, removing the six inch from the travel lane. Um, and make that official and then leave a recommend, just allow staff to address the, the increase of the bike lanes outside of the bridge on the north and south side. Just leave that in as a comment.
Yeah, no, I think that'd be fine. You can make a, a motion for a condition for staff to work with the applicant to widen or excuse me, narrow each travel lane by six inches and widen each bike lane by six inches.
Can Dan give us any guidance on that?
Sure. So, um, so in terms of the, um, the bike lane itself, I guess what I, the applicant says is that he's in, in favor of removing the six inches from the travel lane rather than from the sidewalk.
Correct.
Because it's kind of otherwise compliant with the PD. I think that one of the, the conditions you can add would be, you know, prior to consideration by the Board of Trustees, applicant shall modify its plans to increase the width of the bike lane on the bridge by removing six inches from the vehicular travel lane. I think you, you'd have some difficulty also including removing six inches from the sidewalk itself. Because, um, you know, this, it, it complies with the PD and we only have kind of approval from the, the applicant for the six inches from the, the travel.
All the requests is, is the six inches travel line?
Yeah, it was six. That's, that's all we wasn't put in.
What you said first was correct, Dan.
Okay.
Nothing related.
Okay. That's the condition that I have. The language I have is, uh, to increase the width of the bike lane on the bridge by removing six inches from the vehicular travel lane.
On each side. Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, on each side. Okay. All right. Um, I do have the motion up. I'm happy to make it if somebody else has it up and wants to go for it.
If you're ready.
Um, I think so. I think that's our only exception. So, um, we'll ask Steven to pass everything else along just as a, a comment and recommendations. So, um, let's see, this is a planning commission is, we have a resolution from the planning commission, resolution number PC two. Is that right, Phyllis?
Yes.
Right. Recommending approval of a final development plan for the Marshall Road Bridge connecting planning areas one and two downtown Superior, case number FDP dash 2020 dash zero one. With one exception, that the applicant removes six inches of the vehicular travel lane and increases the bike lane on, on each lane by six inches. And you're welcome to, that's slightly to.
No, that's, uh, yeah, that's. Yeah, that's, that's.
So a motion by Commissioner McCool.
Oh, second.
A second by Commissioner Reese, was that?
And then for those, I need to do a roll call vote.
Okay. And then Phyllis, can you do a roll call vote if everybody wants to unmute and we'll do that?
Sure. McCool?
Yes.
Ritchie?
Very happy to vote yes on this.
Harper?
Yes.
Malia?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Witty?
Yes.
Harden? Yes.
Excellent. So the motion passes unanimous. I didn't really comment either, but I'm very, very happy with all this. It looks awesome. Uh, so thank you guys for putting all that together. And I think we, uh, we'd be very excited to get that bridge across.
Yeah. Thanks staff for all your work. I know this is culmination of a lot of years of work and coordination with a lot of extra agencies. So great job, everybody, staff and applicant.
Great. All right. And then lastly, we just have statements and miscellaneous, I think were the last things on the list.
The, I don't know. Thanks to Angie and Bill and Jim, and I'll be in touch. You guys will wrote this sign off whenever. But as far as announcements go, uh, you guys will have a planning commission meeting on the 19th as well, as I mentioned earlier, uh, to consider the Zaharias application. So it's the park at Rock Creek over off 88th Street. So that application was distributed to everyone right before the COVID crisis hit. And we had a meeting scheduled for the following Tuesday. So I'm not anticipating any changes to that application. Um, there were a handful of technical corrections that we related. And the applicant may have some updates that they want to relate at the meeting, but I think that the plans as distributed are what we're going to consider uh, in two weeks. And, um, so I just wanted to give you a heads up that that meeting is set and I'll send you uh, addition and for, as far as I know, I don't think anything's going to change. We're going to have the same type of Zoom meeting. I am confident we're going to have other participation to that meeting. So that's another hurdle as we get through that one. But, uh, if anyone has any calendar conflicts now that they're aware of, that they want to let me know, that'd be great. If not, you guys can follow up via email as well.
Little bit of a follow up to that. I mean, it might be worth it if you guys can get your, I don't know where the wildlife, I have a couple of copies of the wildlife study that was done by the open space advisory committee back in the day. Zaharias was looked at, it was analyzed and considered, and there are some comments about it. It might be worth just taking a look at. I, I won't quote what they say. I, I have some, some memory of it. I, I won't quote what they say. I, I have some, some memory of it, of the pond being high, you know, some high value, but, but take a look at it. And if you need a, I don't know, Phyllis, is there, is there any way that it exists electronically anywhere that? So we're, we're going to have to address this. There's going to be a lot of public comment. So.
Can you just include it in the packet material, Steven?
Would that be possible? I mean, I have a printed copy, but I don't know if I have an electronic copy of the wildlife.
Why don't you send me what you have just to make sure we're talking about the same report? Because we've had a couple of done more recently since this application came in.
Okay.
Also going to have a consultant attend that meeting on the staff's, you know, to represent staff that, that did do the review for this as well. So she can answer environmental related questions as they come up from, you know, a third party perspective. I'm sure that they'll have a consultant from the applicant's team that can address questions like those as well, but we'll have a third party consultant as well. So, because it's not my wheelhouse.
That's cool. And then lastly, I, you know, with all this going on with COVID, I don't know if we're going to have a chance to work on ADU's discussions or have those discussions. But I did ask at the last meeting, it gives us a little more time to, if you, if you haven't picked up the book Backdoor Revolution by Cole Peterson, that's K O L Cole Peterson, Backdoor Revolution, it would be great if you would. It's really a pretty quick read in the front that talks about the values of it. And then it kind of gets into the details of actually implementing and putting them in yourself if you want to build one. So it's a pretty quick read in the beginning of that book. If you wouldn't mind taking a look at that. Hopefully at some point we'll be able to get back to that.
I downloaded it, but I haven't read it.
Yeah. It's like I said, it's the first few chapters is, is what really gets into the, the governmental side of, and value of doing this in towns. The rest of it is more around you building an ADU and things to consider and think about and all that. Great read, but still, that's first couple, first few chapters are most important. All right. Anybody have anything else? Steven, Phyllis, Martin, anybody?
I have a quick question for Steven, which was, is, is the development at Autry Shores or Superior Shores changing?
It's a different developer that's taken over that project. And we've been working with them offline to get a subdivision plot in. So rather than it come forward as a condo development, which is just one lot, they're going to have to come through with a subdivision plot because they want to have that as a townhome for sale product. So it's a different developer. It's Cobell Builders out of Denver. So they're they've been around a long time. They are a good developer and we're excited to have them on board. I'm anticipating having a, a subdivision plot for you guys to review, I think in June. So I don't have my schedule in front of me, but, uh, applications that'll be coming in, in the summer. I think we're going to have another one for downtown Superior. And then likely something for Rogers Farm as well. So I'm still, still quite busy. Which is good. I'm very grateful. And I'm also very grateful for all the work that some of my colleagues, Martin and Emily and Kevin Cologne have, have done to allow us to meet like this. They did a lot of legwork to get us this. And I appreciate you guys too, making this happen. So it's, everyone's being very flexible, which is great.
I like how it worked. It's working. It's, it's pretty neat.
Yeah, we could use this. It's a shortcut home from here.
That's right.
Actually for me.
All right. That's it. Don't wait. Commissioner Malia, do you have something else? You had your hand raised.
Yeah, one quick comment on, on Steven's mention and the other commissioners' mention of the, what is that Autry Shores property over there with Cobol Homes coming in to be the new developer for that piece of land. They're, sorry, that was me. Yeah, Cobol and Company has been around for, I'd say, close to 100 years around Colorado. And they were actually the family that leased the property to build DIA.
Cool.
Just FYI, Realtor knowledge.
All right. All right. Well, that's it. I will officially adjourn the meeting. We are adjourned. Thank you everyone very much. We'll see you guys in a couple of weeks.
Thank you very much.
Thanks all.
Bye.